This at first for me having two closed sessions, I think, in the same morning.
Can we quickly ditch authority then?
Yeah. We ditched the ditch authority.
Let's see, we have to go back to Amanda, right?
I'll just take over your agenda.
You want to take over my agenda? Okay. We'll wait for Commissioner Heinem to get back.
I know. I feel like violating some sacred law or something. I've had a cup of coffee without my enough.
Took down two more signs today, just so you know.
Good, tear them all down.
Took down two more signs today.
Really? Wow. Oh, you found support on there.
We should have a burning party right out here.
Unless you think we might need them again.
Ah, yeah, that might not look all very good.
We can get some more.
Steve going break on us?
He went to get some ice.
So, Chris, I see you're back with us. Did you hear that we're going to reschedule ditch authority?
Yes, I did hear that.
Thanks, Chris. Sorry.
Okay, Steve's back. We'll go back to Monty Headley County Administrator and we'll discuss the Foley to St. Cloud fiber. And are we talking to Amanda or are we talking to Sarah?
I got you. Make sure we're recording.
Okay.
We're back to live streaming. Go to's going.
Okay, the Foley to St. Cloud fiber. Well, I think today we'd like to leave today with some commitment formally on what the county would contribute towards the Foley to St. Cloud fiber. A little bit of background, so there was a meeting, a special meeting in the Foley City Council yesterday. Commissioner Johnson was there, Amanda was there. A lot of discussion about the fiber insulation and also to some possible additional costs that the city may incur to make changes to the plans to accommodate what we would like to see. They estimated that those additional costs in terms of engineering, legal, and so on and so forth would be about 35,000 of additional costs to accommodate again what we would like to see. You may recall their initial plan was installing just conduit. That was it. And it was actually, we've learned now, it was just going to start at about, they said, Briny Cabinet and come over to Foley. And instead, we're saying we'd like this armored fiber to go all the way to Minnesota Truck Headquarters to connect into our system at that point. So, they're saying, hey, look, we've got to change our plans. We have to have engineering time on this. It's going to be about 35,000. So, there was a motion yesterday at the council meeting that the county could own it provided, you know, we're willing to pay for this incremental engineering costs. There was also another cost that they tossed out of, they'd already spent about $10,000 on their plans already, and I think they felt, okay, the county's going to own this, you probably should bear the cost of what we had spent to create, for example, easements and again, legal and engineering and so on. So, they threw in another $10,000 that they felt we should pay to. Again, to make a long story short, about $45,000 of cost that they believe that the county should incur by virtue of us owning the fiber in their right of way. So, I think, a couple of questions for you today is, is the board comfortable committing to this cost to cover the city's costs? And also, secondly, the underlying cost of the fiber itself, what are we willing to contribute towards that? The latest assessment we had was about 288,000 would be the cost to install the armored fiber for that distance. With the, where are we at in terms of covering that cost? Do you see the city participate in any? One point I wanted to make is, I think Sarah brought this up, the city had already spent, I think, about $400,000 already, you said, in engineering, design work and so on and so forth.
451,000 so far.
Yeah, easement acquisition.
That's, that includes the sewer.
Right, right. But the point, though, is that the fiber wouldn't be possible without the sewer project.
Correct.
Wouldn't be happening.
Absolutely.
So, I think, I think from their perspective, they're saying, look, we've already made a substantial investment that's making this happen. And I think it's important to recognize that.
Certainly.
Correct.
Maybe I could do, Commissioner Johnson, if you had any additional comments you want to add from that meeting or Amanda?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I, you know, I just publicly, I want to give a shout out to the city that they're making this opportunity for us. I think without this project, this would be a non-starter. I can also tell you that I think we're looking at ARP money, American Rescue Plan money, to be able to do this. I can tell you that from my perspective, I would be coming to the rest of you members and even asking you for capital dollars if we didn't have ARP money. So, this is high, high priority. I believe this is a bigger picture than a city of Foley. This is an opportunity for us to expand this county's broadband and the paybacks there. I'm going to cut to the chase so we can move on with discussion. Mr. Chair, I'm going to offer a motion that the county would own this fiber from MTH all the way to Highway 25. I think that we can put forth an initial dollar amount of up to $325,000 for that armored fiber. I also believe that we could pay back the city up to the $45,000. I would like to have some continued discussion about those expenses, but I believe that we could go up to that amount. I also think after yesterday's meeting, you know, the city has obvious concerns about where the county would be looking forward to their potential use of this fiber. We could obviously verify this number, but I think, you know, I talked to Commissioner Kapinski about this in our past committee meetings. I think if we look at dedicating up to eight strands of that fiber to the city, I think the other picture of this is we should take care of the school district while we're at it. I think we could look at maybe six or eight strands of the school district. Now, to be clear, the city and/or the school district would do their own build out. We're bringing this fiber to Highway 25, but the city of Foley and/or the school district would do their own build out of that, of that fiber. So, I just want to make sure that their responsibility would be stated. I think part of our discussion coming up also will be hopefully to set up some type of formal committee that we can move ahead with this, this project. So, Mr. Chair, I want to offer that as a, I know it's a wide motion, Beth, but if we could, if there's a potential second on it, we can have more discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that with a couple of clarifications. I do want to make sure that we work with the city of Foley on this 40, up to $45,000 and make sure we can get that as, as cost effective as we can. And then, the other motion is, is I think we do got to bring in the city or the Foley School District to find out what, if anything, they can bring to the table. But this is a once in a lifetime deal, so. Okay. So, it's been, we've had a motion and a second, and now we'll have further discussion. So, when you were talking, the school district, you were talking about contributions.
Contributions.
Contributions, okay.
If possible.
One thing I have a question, a serious question on, is I'm not so sure that the county needs to own this fiber. If you go up and we got to look at this a lot closer, Lake County went into this project a number of years ago, and they could not wait to get rid of some of their cost that was associated with this. I don't know if they ever got it sold. I know it was, you know, it was represented by AMC and all this on their costs that went with this. What is our annual cost if we own this fiber?
Our annual cost is going to be directed towards the carrier that, that takes over that fiber. Our annual cost is going to be the locating that we would have to do on the water or the sewer main, anyway.
I think the benefit of owning it is we control that fiber because that gives us that connection between here and our.
And I know theirs up there was way more, you know, it was way more expanded than just one, one line coming in. But when you talk to, you know, Commissioner Sway and some of them, man, that was the biggest mistake they made in their county in a long, long time.
I think they actually dabbled into being a provider.
Provider, correct.
We're not doing that.
There's no, there's no consideration for that.
There's no consideration to be a provider.
We're not doing a provider.
And I believe that this committee that potentially we would set up is going to go out, you know, we're going to be requesting RFPs, we're going to be talking to potential providers of who are going to build this out.
Yep.
I, we have no interest in building this out.
We have no interest in building.
Our interest is getting that fiber from MTH to Highway 25.
I definitely don't want to be a provider. All right. And that would answer some of my questions. We're not going that route.
No. Mr. Chair, I should just emphasize, one point that was discussed at length yesterday in the Foley council meeting was the folks in Foley want to make sure that Foley got the benefit from this. In other words, they want to make sure that, that we're bringing broadband service to the residents and businesses of Foley and that the city benefits. So, I just want to make sure I made that point. That was a big topic of discussion and a significant concern from council members. So, I just, did I accurately portray that?
Right. And that's definitely the interest I would, everybody on this board is that we, you know, we know what the potential Foley is going to be.
Again, it isn't just the city's own government needs, it's also, again, the residents and businesses. That's clearly very important to them.
And we know the benefits of that. I mean, there's no doubt about it.
Yep. Mr. Chair, and as we, as we look forward down the road, this is just the one side of things. We should be working with the cities in our county to utilize, and townships, to utilize some of their broadband money or this ARP money to further build out as well.
So, would there be any annual cost associated with this after it's in? None whatsoever?
It'd be the locating, because.
Very minimal.
Yep.
Very minimal annual cost.
Out to the public works, right?
No.
It would come into town about Snap Fitness and it'd go to Minnesota Truck Headquarters over on Highway 23.
And then we could eliminate some of our costs. I see Steve is here.
Right. The goal, again, is eliminating that commercial internet service at East Gate.
So, virtually, other than the money we put up front, we could.
$1,100 a month savings.
Right.
Eventually, there'll be a nice payback on that.
Right. Okay.
That doesn't even touch the economic development potential. The racks that are coming.
And then, the total cost of installing it later on can be assessed or can be addressed, whether it's rescue money or, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Johnson that even if there wasn't rescue money there, I would be in favor of the county supporting this.
And I should just add, is broadband is heavily featured in any guides I've read so far on American Rescue Plan Act dollars, yeah.
Okay.
I think with what, also what this motion does is it signifies or signals to the city that, hey, they can go ahead and get rolling on this.
Yes.
We're on a timeline, they're on a timeline that costs money every day that everybody's sitting on their hands, so.
I would have to agree with them. And we've, we've pushed this around ever since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
And ever since you've been on the board, too, you know, Commissioner Pop. But we never knew how to do this. What a great opportunity in front of us, you know, for the city of Foley. Go ahead, Monty. Don't let you speak.
Sarah, does that give you what you need, this motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if this is part of the motion or, or part of the discussion or not, but I had a conversation with a person from ARVIC, and they were, they were more or less under the understanding that they were it. I mean, is that, is that all this went down, Sarah? Or can you?
Do you want to come up and talk there?
I, and there's a little, there's a fine line here, as you know.
Yes, so, we did not have any committed financial partners. So, the council undertook the initiative, we're just going to do it on our own, lay the conduit, working with the provider, ARVIC, from Briny's Cabinets towards, we were going to tap into their existing infrastructure and then bring it to Foley. And that decision was made because plans were due to the MPCA, the state, in March. We didn't have any committed financial partners. The city council still wanted to get that fiber to Foley. So, they, they stuck their necks out a little bit and did that. You know, completely understand where the county's at right now. We, I can't stress enough, we are on a very critical timeline, though, with this.
Right. So, and so now, we're going to go to Minnesota Truck Headquarters and ARVIC will not be involved in that, then?
Maybe Amanda can talk more about that. I think the conversation is intended to include multiple number of providers as part of the project.
But they have fiber to.
Mr. Chair, I think what's going to, I know what's going to end up happening is we're going to be going out to a lot of providers to get RFPs and figure out how they can better help the county, not just this thoroughfare of fiber.
Okay.
We want to get a buy-in and help out the county versus just having one runway of fiber.
You know, I'm all on 100, don't get me wrong, I'm 100% in favor of this. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, got something going on that maybe shouldn't be going on or what our costs going to be.
Mr. Chair, I think that's a good point. We have it on the record now from the city administrator that we have no other financial commitments.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing official with that commitment, but the reason that was undertaken is because that was our option, the best option for the city to do it by themselves at the time.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, thanks. Any other discussion?
No, let's get it done.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second? And Beth, you want to read that motion?
It's a two-page. It's a two-page motion.
I can, if you can, I mean, I can read back. It's basically that it was two parts, that the county would have ownership of the fiber from Minnesota Truck Headquarters to Foley. The county would cover the cost of the fiber insulation and I think up to, was it three?
325,000.
Yep, okay. And the county would cover the costs, city costs, to make revisions to their plans and so on and so forth, up to 45,000. With the understanding, we're going to continue some discussions with the city about what those costs are, but that was the motion, those three parts.
Just to clarify, Monty, not only to come to Foley, but specifically to Highway 25, because it's my understanding that's where we can connect into our sheriff's office, et cetera. So, SNAP is a good area, but I think that line needs to come to Highway 25.
Yes. This is referencing the segment over here when this is reconstructed next year, right?
And that will tie in with, I see Sheriff Heck.
There's still going to be a gap. There's still going to be a gap between there and Snap Fitness, and that's an issue we still have to address.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And that'll tie in with Sheriff Heck's current system or whatever.
Well, it'll tie in with the county system. It'd be a line that would come in from the highway over to our data center here in the old courthouse.
Okay.
Right. That's how we connect to East Gate.
Also, Monty, just to clarify that, you know, the city of Foley slash and/or the school district would be responsible for their own build out, their own specific build out. I mean, we're not building out the city of Foley.
No, right. That's another issue for another day.
Yeah, that's.
Yep. I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah.
For the expectations.
Thanks, Scott.
We're just getting the pipeline to Foley and those are next steps.
That's what this motion is about. That's right.
Okay. So, we got the question and the discussion, and I think we know the motion. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Gary?
And Sarah, thank you again for all Foley's work.
Yep, thank you.
So, leading in, if I may, Mr. Chair, you saw my agenda item, and I posed a number of questions, and we kind of touched on some of those here already. But you may, you know, we've had some means now at the city of St. Cloud, I'm sorry, city of Foley. And the original discussion was about the fiber. Those discussions have evolved broader, though, to some discussions with providers and what they can do and so on and so forth, what their interests are. And I thought it might be a good time to pause and sort of talk about process. There's a lot of money involved here, it's very complicated. What's going to be our process from today to the point where there's fiber in the ground and service to residents? How are we going to get there? And one point I think I just, I want to try and make is I felt, given that there's federal funds involved, substantial federal funds, there probably should be some sort of competitive process where you put out an RFP and providers apply for and are awarded grants and there's contracts and so on and so forth. That's how I would suggest the process to occur so that, again, there's that, there's that competitive nature to it. So, I guess the issue is, you know, how do we get from point A to point B? How do we get an RFP out on the street? How do we review proposals from, from companies? Who develops contracts with those companies? Who monitors it? And so on and so forth. So, I have lots of questions for you. I'm just curious to hear your impressions of how, how this process should work, how you feel we should, you know, get from point A to point B.
Mr. Chair.
There you go, Jared.
Well, Monty, I think we're a little bit early on, on figuring out, we just did the Foley route. I think, I think we need to continue to have committee discussions, and I know Commissioner Johnson's been a part of them, Amanda, city of Foley, you yourself. I think we got to, we got to meet with more providers and kind of get an understanding of what they would be looking for. And then, we got to get our opinion out there, what we're looking for on the county standpoint. Once, like, once we get that done, then we, we can basically summarize a, a RFP to be sent out. And we'll probably have to hire somebody at that point to put one together.
Write an RFP for us?
Yep.
I would, excuse me, Chair.
But then, but then, once, once we get to that point and we really finalize our, our goals and objectives, then, then we have that company or individual come in and write an RFP at that point to, to make sure we are abiding by the, all of the specifications on, on money.
Mr. Chair, if I could, and maybe to answer Monty's question, because I think he's looking for a little guidance on that, is, you know, it seems to me to be appropriate to maybe finalize or set up that subcommittee, you know, a couple of members from the board, Monty, Amanda.
Armored, yeah.
You know, to be able to, to make some decisions and bring back to the full county board for their approval or denial.
Right. And as you talk to other providers, I know, when, when they came through up in Meyer, through Benton Communications, they sent out a letter saying that, you know, we're coming, we've got this grant money, and if you hook up now, your cost would be virtually nil. And if you come back later and want to hook up, and virtually, everybody hooked up because it was nil. And that determined sometimes down which road, which street, which avenue they were going to go.
One thing I think we need to do is understand, you know, where are the unserved, underserved areas of our county? We don't necessarily know that. So, I guess one question of this, how do we go about establishing that? So, in other words, we would go to a provider and say, okay, folks, these are the areas of our county that we feel are underserved or underserved. Here's what we want you to make proposals on. I was thinking, you know, we probably need to tell them rather than, than them telling us where they propose to serve, because they may naturally just gravitate where there's the highest density of residents.
Correct.
They can do the most business, but that doesn't necessarily meet our expectations.
That's right.
So, we've got to be able to adequately describe, here's the areas of our county that are unserved or underserved. I'm not necessarily sure how, though, you get there, how you come up with this very detailed map which illustrates that issue.
Jared? Mr. Chair, I think it's going to be a, a conversation that goes both ways. They're going to have to come to the table, show us what they have in Benton County as a, as a provider, and we're going to have to make like a different colored map for each provider and show the, show the areas that they're in, and then really find out our underserved communities after that.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I could, Jared, we had Jim Martinson here this morning present us with a preliminary map of underserved and areas. It's certainly a good starting point.
One thing I learned from the meeting with ARVIC, I'm sorry, Benton Telco, is that they're not restricted to provide internet service in their, their telephone calling area. They can go anywhere.
With internet service.
Right.
And if you looked at that map, you know, in the northwest tip way up along the river, Benton Communications is going in there this summer and providing that, that with, with services. And they, prior to, a couple of years ago, they were not interested in that, but they're, they have no service up there. And so, they, they did a survey, they did everything else, and now they're going to go in there this summer and do that.
I guess for me, just this morning, I was hoping to get just a general sense of, are you okay with that framework of eventually, again, RFP, you know, being awarded, awarding grants and that sort of, that sort of competitive process? I just want to make sure that's something you were comfortable with.
You mean, for the main fiber or for?
No, for broadband in general.
Broadband in general, that's right, yeah.
If, if you look at these ARP grants or monies that are coming out, then, from the mic call the other day, that's the only thing that really is approved at this point. There's a lot, a lot more stuff coming out that, that will be approved, but the one thing that they've said is we need to invest in broadband. And if you invest in broadband, you know, businesses, people, everything will come. We're in a, we're in a kind of a great position with Foley, basically putting their neck out there for the last probably year, getting this kind of route going where we can all jump on board and, and really better the county.
So, maybe, maybe this, maybe this morning, one thing you could do is maybe sort of formally anoint this committee, who its members might be, so that's kind of on the record, we, this is our committee, this is our group, we're going to start with. And the second issue is, I had later in the agenda possibly inviting Bill Coleman to speak to you. I guess I want to ask you, do you want to or need to hear from Bill Coleman? Or is that an issue, is that something we can forego at this point?
I see, we, myself, I see we just hold off a tad bit until.
We've got a fair amount of time here.
Yeah.
Yeah, before we're. I would agree. I believe there's going to be a need for that. I think we're, may just be a little bit early. I think if we can get this subcommittee established and come forth with some of those recommendations.
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree. Get the subcommittee together. Let them take care through the process.
So, on this subcommittee, it'll be the county, the city?
Well, obviously, our two commissioners, I would say, I would say definitely represented from city of Foley, BEP. Beyond that.
Mr. Chair.
And yourself, Monty, too, of course.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think there's other monies out there, but, I mean, I don't think we need everybody from a township or, or stuff like that, but I think city of Sauk Rapids probably, because if we want to link the, the city buildings there with our.
Our cities should be asked to represent themselves, okay? Yeah.
Well, I think we have two commissioners right now that are well on board with this, and I wouldn't, wouldn't want to change that.
Exactly.
Of course you want Steve.
I just want to, again, reemphasize, I think at some point, we may need to ask you to commit some of these resources to some outside help.
Yep.
With an RFP, with helping evaluate those responses and so on and so forth, so that may come down the line.
Absolutely. Would it be any need for our IT department to have somebody on there?
You bet. I think that's great to have IT as Stephen.
Stephen or Steve?
That's what you get for showing up, Stephen.
So, and then, do we want Amanda to find, either be Amanda or somebody from?
I would just say BEP, and then the BEP folks can decide who that is, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Going to write that down, Amanda?
Another committee?
Another committee, yeah.
And then, I propose of, if we don't have the townships involved, I say that we take turns going around with the townships, explain what's going on. Get it out there.
Yep, absolutely.
Especially, you know, the townships that are involved, those who owe the service.
Yep.
That helps me a lot. Again, maybe y'all could just do a motion to sort of officially anoint that committee, and that goes in the record, and, and we'll add, we'll add that to the, the standing committee listing. That's what I thought we would do.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I know who, I know who we talked about, too.
Yeah. You wanted to verify that, Steve?
It's for Beth to have clarification of what we all said about that motion, right, Beth?
Got it.
My deal will help you.[1610.73]
Our committee would be.
Another two-page motion.
Our committee would be Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Kapinski, Representative BEP, representatives of each of our cities.
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 And.
And Steve.
And Steve.
And IT, of course. How could I forget IT?
Yeah. So, um, I'll second that. So it's been made, most have been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I think, I appreciate the discussion this morning.
Okay. Well, I see we're gonna recess for human services at nine thirty-four, and it's now.
Eleven forty-six.
Eleven forty-six. So we'll recess the county board to conduct Human Services Board meeting at this time.
It's been a long morning. We'll call lower the Human Services Board. Is there anything to add to the agenda, Bob? No.
Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent item one and two. Anyone's want, number one or two pulled?
I'll move approval for consent items one and two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Where's the agenda? What about, is it about the school?
That's number two, yeah.
Bussing?
Yes.
I'm gonna talk about that.
Did you want number two pulled? We got a, okay.
Instead of just a consent, yeah, pull.
Okay, hang on a minute. We got a motion and a second.
I'll resend the motion.
Thank you. And the second.
I'll do the same. Well, I, I made the motion, so I'll resend mine.
Send first.
I'll resend the second.
The second, here we'll, okay. Now, I'll go right back again. Is there anybody that wants number one or number two pulled under the consent item?
Number two, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
I'll move approval on item number one on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlangen, number two.
Uh, with the, how school districts figure out how to bus people?
You're gonna make Sandy's day because that's why she stayed, just in case.
It makes my day.
Right.
So, what that is, is an agreement for how the schools and the counties, well, this case is just St. Cloud School, but we have agreements with other schools as well, about how we pay for transportation for kids who are in foster care to get back to their home school district. We're mandated as much as possible to keep kids in their home district when we place them in care. So, mostly our county tries to place them close and figure out other ways to do that without providing excess cost. But sometimes there is extra cost to transport them back. Does that explain that?
Um, I'm just, if there's busing going on between all the areas, how do they figure, can't they just figure that out between the school districts, or?
Well, they want us to pay, someone to pay for it. So, schools aren't mandated, for example, to transport a child from Malaca back to their home school district in St. Cloud. So somebody needs to pay for that. And the agreement, um, between St. Cloud School District and Benton County is to split the cost.
Okay, 'cause, you know, when I, I remember doing, going from counties and stuff and school districts that, they worked it out between the two school districts to figure out the cost.
Right, but now it's mandated for the county to split the cost.
How did they get that mandated?
I'm not sure.
The legislators did that.
Really?
And I, it behooved us to work with the schools, otherwise we were gonna get stuck with a whole.
Correct.
Thing. But this way, the schools can have some influence as far as just being able to work interdependently. But, uh, at the end of the day, we would've had to pay for it, so we were all in with, uh, sharing the load with the school and have, that way we can make sure that we get it done, because sometimes we have kids that are well out of our county here, that they get put somewhere that's too far for buses to connect. So, they might have to send a van somewhere, so.
Right, we're pretty creative.
Kinda considered the parent, but that.
Well, they're in foster care, and a lot of times there's a reason why they're in foster care in the first place, and the families may not be part of that, but.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say that that isn't part of the equation.
So instead of getting it through the person or the child, it's coming from you instead to reimburse?
A shared, a shared.
Right, because we attain custody of the children while they're in foster care, they're no longer in their parents' custody. Usually it's a child protection issue, so they may or not, may or may not be seeing their children, but they aren't responsible for the transportation. The school and the county is.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Schlangen, what would you like to do with number two?
Accept.
I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bob, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else. Unless the board asks any questions.
Anybody have questions for Bob? Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Now we're adjourned, and I'll bring it back to the chair.
We'll reconvene the county board meeting, and, uh, we'll have commissioner meeting updates. Who wishes to start?
I can start. All right. We had a number of different, uh, fiber projects. I think we had one, two, three of them? Um, fiber projects, uh, fiber meetings. We, we definitely went over that at a little bit of length today, so I'm not gonna bore anybody. Great talks. St. Cloud APO, um, we went over their, um, non-motorized, uh, we, we went over a bunch of stuff. Uh, non, non-motorized accidents, and, and there's a huge congestion of them along the Highway ten area. Um, transit rides, Metro Bus continues to decline. However, there's a lot of people in St. Cloud that are still on board with the, um, transit line coming to St. Cloud. So even though all that's, all that is declining, um, they're on board with that. Uh, dialer ride is going up, um, air quality's improving. We went over the, the main projects for, um, the, the St. Cloud APO to be pushed for this transportation package that's coming out, and we had to get it, we had to get it in by next week. So, um, a few of us fought to get, uh, the, what, what they call the Southwest Beltway and the Southern Beltway, um, pushed to the top. They, they actually were one and two, or they were actually two and three. The first one was the Fifteenth Street, um, project in, in Wade Park going through twenty-three and stuff. That was the number one project with all the accidents that have been there. Um, but we, we ended up, at the end, we motioned to make the Beltway, um, one project at one hundred and seventy million dollars, uh, to push forward. Now, that's not the whole Beltway, that's just two legs of it. But the other two legs are about forty million in combined, um, uh, dollars that we figured. If these got built, we'll, uh, we'll figure out a way to build the other ones. So, uh, those are, basically, so we went to the, we're going to the government with two projects that are very high on the priority. Um, that was pretty much it for the APO. Uh, we went through the MICA meeting, I'm sure you'll give up some, but the, the ARP money coming to the state was originally scheduled at two hundred fifty-six million. It's two, uh, two point eight, or two, two million, or two hundred eighty-three million. Uh, the county numbers are not gonna change. Uh, the month, the additional money is going to, uh, cities that are fifty thousand above. So, um, that's where the extra thirty million is gonna be going. There's actually some, some cities that are lower in, in, um, um, counts that are, they're gonna lose a little bit of money. As I'm afraid Foley might, might be in that. Um, uh, to, 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 uh, tax bill, uh, local government aid is, uh, no increases. Probably seen that coming.
It was better than having a decrease.
Yeah.
Yeah, we heard more about a decrease.
So we've been hearing.
Yeah. Um, I, once again, they're, uh, they're, they were fighting about the bills and everything like that. Law enforcement reinforce, uh, reform. There's, there's, there's bills that are completely one-sided each way on that. Um, but, but it sounds like some of them are moving forward. Uh, basically what they're doing, and maybe Mr. Heck has a little bit more information on this, but, uh, you, you can write a, i- if they got a warrant, you can, you can basically give them a, 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 a notice to show to court. You don't have to arrest them at this time. Um, it sounds like that's making headway. Um, and there's only certain ones that, uh, that you can actually arrest at right now, so. Um, uh, there's modifications to the body worn cameras coming. That's what they were, that we're saying in there. I don't know if you knew anything about that.
To be honest, there's a lot of proposals that are going on in the legislature right now.
Okay.
I, I know that there are, is a push for some funding and also some requirements tied to that funding. Uh, yeah. A lot of this just comes down to waiting and see what actually is gonna get passed.
With that, they're also, uh, wi- with municipalities with forty to fifty officers, uh, over forty to fifty officers, they're, they're, uh, trying to build, uh, citizen oversight committees. So, uh, let's see here. Um, I think that's, that's it on my end. The Highway twenty-three coalition, we were all a part of that. And, uh, I, I got a concern on that one just for the fact that, I, if, you know, if I felt like everything was put in place and, and there was really no discussion, it was more of a, here you go. I hope there's more discussion on that one. I don't, who's been on that in the past?
Yeah, I think I didn't, I managed to miss that one, to be the truth. But I told Jared, I said that I think there's more discussion happens when you're in person.
Yes.
Um, so I think that, that paid a big part. We'll probably have our fall meeting in person somewhere's down in the Wilbrae area. And that, but that one'll be just for, um, that won't be their annual meeting, it'll be their, also be for Commissioner Kapinski and myself.
Perfect.
And you kinda get to feel then for different things. They'll elect the chair and stuff like that.
Mr. Chair, I could go next if that's fine with you.
Yep.
And it will be a shortened version of Jared's, I can guarantee you that. Uh, he's right, we did meet three different times, uh, with kind of a pre-committee about fiber, uh, both with Amanda and the city. And so, obviously that brought us to our spot today that we were in. Um, we did have planning commission meeting the other night. I touched base on the fact that the planning commission did review that ordinance, uh, suggestion to the full county board. Uh, we also did approve another solar garden, uh, on the outskirts of the city. Uh, this particular garden will be directly across from the county highway department up on Highway twenty-five. Um, and so, obviously that, uh, spot is not in the orderly annexation area, but it is a growth area, so. Um, and just some other, uh, normal items on our planning commission, uh, uh, that we would normally face. Uh, I too was on the Highway twenty-three coalition. I felt the same way as Commissioner Kapinski. I'm not really sure what the purpose of, uh, that attendance was, but it was very informational, and it was my first time with that, so learned a few things there. Um, with that, I'd just like to say thank you for your support today. I know the city's gonna be excited to be able to move forward with this, uh, broadband, um, project, and so I appreciate the support from the rest of the members. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Yep, I was on the twenty-three. Um, did you guys get in on the National Association of Counties one about the, um, Treasury's fiscal recovery fund guidance? I copied all that off if you guys want that for reference.
I'll make a copy of this and you return it to me.
Oh, you can, you can.
I can keep it?
Yeah, you can keep it.
Okay, thank you.
It's pretty much what you guys deal with.
Okay.
Uh, first steps, um, they're looking more into the home visits and more in-person screenings. Um, still, and they's, there was some carryover funds that just went back to General Pot for grants and they'll, so there's more money available when we need it. And they're hoping to get back to, um, in-person meetings for the council, too. Uh, criminal justice meeting. Uh, they're on a, they have a pilot project. They're in the trial stage of working with Stearns County. And most of the court is still going virtual. Anna Marie's was doing more in-person and with virtual support. R S V P, I have that one somewhere here. Now, let's go to the Career Solutions. Um, they had their, um, executive board meeting and, um, working on workforce development, working with the legislature, and making sure they were switching funds around to meet the needs for all the programs. R S V P was, um, working with the elderly volunteers. They have a bunch of fundraisers they're gonna be doing. Here it is. They're gonna be doing rock sales and, um, hoping to get, let's see there. Uh, needing drivers for transportation and getting more in-person things done. And then there was careers, we got career solutions done. Minnesota Transportation Alliance. They're working with, um, working with the Blatnik Bridge for future funding, um, decreasing greenhouse gases, um, and the transportation industry and a council with that. Bought electric cars and, um, charging infrastructure and grants for that. Working on earmarks with, um, multi-programms. Try to get some things done. There is quite a few. Uh, I went to the Minnan Township, um, monthly meeting. And they talked about, um, their ditch brushing and the events going on at the, um, racetrack. And have things pretty much under control. They're still working on how they're gonna deal with the extra events out there. They were, if they were gonna be going, they were gonna ask for some, they wanted to talk about parking on the north side of the road, so they were gonna have some, um, security support for people crossing over and traffic control. Pretty much it.
Steve?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I too was on a couple of the meetings with, meetings with Commissioner Schlangen. Uh, criminal justice, uh, committee meeting. Sheriff Heck gave an update on the CAP, CAP team, how they're gonna be moving forward. Not quick enough in my opinion, but I understand Sheriff. Uh, they gave, they also gave an update on the jail. Forty, forty of them men, I think, I was told, thirty-four males, seven females. About right. They talked about, we didn't even talk, I think they talked a little bit about the STS program, too, of course, but. Uh, then I had, I was on, of course, Chair Career Solutions. We went over a lot of different things, but. I too will be signing my name to a letter that's going to legislators and to Deed. So Monte, you'll be getting a phone call probably, just letting you know, because the letter's gonna be pretty aggressive. So, Deed said that we can open up at fifty percent, but they were not giving the support staff for it, which they're supposed to.
Okay.
Uh, so we're, we're pushing back. And we got a lot of support. There's seven other, uh, Career Solutions, career workforces in our region that we got the support from, and we're also getting support from the, uh, Central Care, too. So we got some pretty big hitters on that letter, but just letting you know, Monte, FYI. And then I had a solid waste advisory board committee, too, last night, and we did approve all of the applications, but they won't be approved till the next board meeting, I'm assuming. Correct, Monte?
Did they include the one for parks, the recycle bins?
Yes, and I thanked everybody in there. Finally, finally, we're doing something for the parks in Benton County. It's been a long road ahead. Now we're getting started. Let's, let's not end that. Let's keep moving forward with that.
They got a lot of things on their agenda in that Parks Commission.
That's good. All about recycling. This is a recycling program. Let's move forward with it and keep moving, you know? Uh, I also, too, was asked to, and asked to, uh, join in on that Minnan Township. I really didn't know why, but I found out why when they started asking questions. And that's something that their board's gonna have to figure out, not me or Beth. So, and I'm just gonna leave that at that, so.
Okay. Well, I had, I wasn't here last, at the last meeting, and so we had the finance committee meeting for the library, and we are gonna have a decrease in that. I don't know to what dollar amount, I think it's about one point six five percent. Um, everybody was, we wanted to hold everybody neutral in the funding, or as close as we could. And the way the tax capacity set up, that Todd County is the largest increase this year. Their tax capacity has went up a lot, and their usage. So, they kind of see, received about a forty-eight hundred dollar increase in their contribution to the library. I think ours is gonna be somewhere's around that four to six thousand dollar decrease. Um, at first, we were gonna go with, everybody is neutral, and then when we did the, when we did the, we had. And then when we did the, when we did the, we had to rearrange the math in order to get everybody neutral because you know, the big, or actually Wright County had the biggest increase. They're going to buy about a $23,000 increase. And in order to get them neutral, we had to get a decrease. If we just give them 23,000, we had some pushback like, okay, why are we giving Wright County a $23,000 blank check versus, you know, somebody like the other county? So this is what we came up with and we were quite concerned with Todd County being how small they are, you know, that, so that's what it's going to get. And then when I was on with Jared on the MICA deal and he covered almost everything, a couple of things that they had is that a bill that's already passed and is out there is that at the women's correction facility in Shakopee, if you're a pregnant woman in there, they're going to try their hardest to get you out to like a halfway house or something. They do not want this going on anymore in the prison down there. So that was, it had a good sponsor and I guess a lot of support for that. And then there's nothing really happening in Minnesota too with election reform. I think the take is that they figure that Minnesota was pretty secure, pretty good. You know, we never heard a lot about fraud in Minnesota, we weren't a player, so that, you know, the, the, you know, they couldn't come and say, oh, you know, it wasn't close enough to say there was fraud in Minnesota is basically what they heard. So they're really not looking at anything like that. That was a couple of things that I had that, that I didn't get out of Jared's report. And that was all that I had, I missed the Highway 23 deal, so. Then we got to go to Set Committee of the Holes.
Well, it looks like at this point, we're going to forego a meeting with Bill. Looks like the only thing, we got a couple of things to add is you've got the AMC District Five meeting, that's June 14th. I had on here 8:15, 8:15 is what they actually called it, you need to order, but we probably should put actually 8:00 AM as a start time because I think they usually have coffee and donuts. And then, yeah, so we'll go with eight, that's in Malaca, the Northern Lights Ballroom.
There was also a meeting that Commissioner Johnson attended that we wanted to make sure we add. It was sort of an after the fact and it was one of the broadband meetings. Do you, can you give us like the date, time and place of that meeting that you attended?
I'll look that up if you want to continue going.
And we want to make sure we put that in the record.
Okay.
Other than that, I just had one slight change with your human services committee of the hole, that, those kind of those, those ones we have quarterly. The next one is June 7th and you're, right now, your, your calendar shows it started here in the boardroom. We, I think, uncomfortably moved to the human services third floor conference room going forward.
At what time?
I think that's much better.
Yeah. What time did you say?
Then that one is going to be at 10:00 AM, June 7th. It's on your committee hole listing right now, but it shows county boardroom as the location. We'll change that to human services third floor conference room.
Nice, that would be nice.
Monte, so, yes, May 5th, Jared and I met with Amanda at Falcon on, on the broadband.
Okay. Did any other commissioners attend then? Okay, but that was one, that was kind of like an after the fact, kind of one we'll put in the record then.
Yep.
Did you get that?
May 5th, Jared and I met with Amanda at Falcon Bank in regards to the fiber.
Yep.
It, it just sounded like general heading of the Foley to St. Cloud Fiber.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. May 5th, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to request a committee of the hole if that's, that's okay, so.
That's all I have.
We just had a, a road tour, so I would like to continue our discussion on our next five-year road construction plan. So I'm looking as early as June 2nd or 3rd if either one of those dates works for the board. Anytime that works best.
And I'm sorry if I was looking at my calendar and I missed it, do we have something on after our meeting on the 1st?
No, I'm not a big fan of having committee holes after a board meeting.
Okay, all right.
The day drags on too long and
That's fine.
I don't think you're
I'm available.
There's a ditch meeting or something.
We have a public hearing that
You're right, so.
Oh yeah, that's what it is, going to be long. I'm open the 2nd or the 3rd.
Wednesday the 2nd? 9 o'clock?
That works for me. Thank you.
That's, I believe that's all we have then. So that was Wednesday, June, June 2nd at 9, okay. For highway road program issues.
Motion to Set Committee Holes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second and Set Committee Holes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess we, we missed Commissioner Concerns. Anybody have any Commissioner Concerns?
Second. Yep, and then he gave us a reminder about this meeting on June 14th.
Monte, then we have to conduct a
Yeah, we're done, so we're all done with closed sessions and all that business, so I guess the decision before you is do you want to go ahead and have your committee of the hole to talk about space issues or reschedule for another day or have lunch and come back? What do you think? Are you all ready to, to, to move forward with your committee?
I've got to definitely leave.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd agree, I think we need to spend a considerable
A lot of time on this. Okay, so.
So we better get calendars back out then.
Yeah.
You know, how about, could we, could we package it with Chris's cow we just set on June 2nd?
How long do you think yours is going to need? One thing, Chris, I would, I would like, like, and I should have told you this before, when you're doing your five-year road plan, we might want to look at, you know, with the cost of, of, I understand that Knife River is hungry for business. Maybe we need to look at maybe letting another bid or something for some roads this year with some of the
Sure, we could talk about that, it comes down to staffing. We've already got tied up with already considered, you know, construction projects, so.
It just, you know, bids were great on 55 and I think they're even greater from what I understand, you know. You hate to pass up on something that could happen for a lot less money.
Okay, yeah, we could talk about that.
The way you think, is that too much for a morning highway program and space issues on June 2nd? We could start a little earlier too, if that helps.
What about the 7th?
For a separate day?
No, we already got one with human services third floor.
How long does that usually take? I can't remember.
I don't, I haven't seen the agenda yet and sometimes, sometimes those have been fairly lengthy, you know, a good 90 minutes, yeah.
We get a lot of reports in the past.
I wouldn't want to make assumptions not knowing specifically what they want to talk about.
They usually features some specific department once in a while.
Chris, would it be reasonable, I'm sorry, would it be reasonable for an hour for your, or are you thinking more?
I think we, yeah, I think we could at least talk an hour, so.
All right.
We've got some tough decisions to make, I think, for the next five years. The big goal right now, I think, for us is to maybe get a consensus on next year's projects. So we can continue planning our staff out for the summer and design work for next year projects. And if there's something else that we want to try to get accomplished still yet this year, that would be the main goal maybe of this first cow.
I guess my, yeah, excuse me, I guess my thought is that's an important discussion too, boy, to tie that together with space needs.
Yeah.
That might be tough.
That's too much, okay.
Might be tough.
Can we, I mean, this, the space needs, I mean, it's something we need to address, but we're not desperate right, you know.
It's not, it's not, it's important, but it's not urgent.
Right, there you go.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, we could go to the, to the week of the 7th to the 12th somewhere as an air.
Let me see here, 7th, I, I, I'm, let's see here. That week is, it actually doesn't, I'm sorry, does not work for me.
Okay.
Got my kid that week.
Okay, we have a board meeting on the 15th.
Perfect.
Looks like I'm 16th, 17th, 18th, how does it work for you people? Scott, he had a phone call on me.
Okay. We're looking at the 16th or 17th of June?
Yeah. 16th or 17th of June for
I have AMC virtual check-in on the 16th, I assume it's a training.
How about 17th then?
But that's, I'm
That's a busy week. We got the Northern Lights, we got the board meeting. Don't we?
15th is board meeting.
But we got the Northern Lights on the 14th, right?
The 14th is AMC District Five in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the 15th board meeting.
Right.
16th, we have AMC training.
Okay, I don't have that down, I don't need training? You need training.
I mean, I, from my perspective, I would, I would do the cow over the AMC.
Yeah. We could do the 16th. What time is your AMC?
9.
9 to 11.
Yeah, I say we skip that.
Let's do the cow on the 16th.
Does that work for you, Chris? No, this is space needs.
Oh, space, I'm sorry, space needs, okay, my bad.
This is space needs, yeah, so June 16th at 9?
Yep.
Okay. Here in the boardroom?
Yep.
All righty. Yeah, just to recap, the highway one is June 2nd at 9, here in the boardroom. AMC District Five, June 14th at 8, Malaca. Space needs, June 16th at 9, here in the boardroom.
One thing to mention, if you want to do the District Five meeting, they are going to offer a one-day virtual meeting that you can go to. But it will, won't cover, it will not cover just our district, it's going to cover all the districts for one time. I don't know when that is.
It's June 21st, does anyone feel, foresee that you participate in the virtual one?
No.
No.
Then we'll just leave that one off the list then, okay.
Monte, you need an updated motion to approve the cow?
Please.
Just a minute, we got a, the ditch hearing is on the 1st?
Excuse me?
Is a ditch hearing on the 1st of June?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, it's right after our regular board meeting.
Yeah, if we moved that to our regular board meeting on the 1st.
Regular board meeting, yeah.
Okay, so the ditch stuff that we were talking about is going to be
Got moved to the 1st.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I believe I was the one who made the motion for the
Second.
To update.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Thank you very much. Any other business need to come before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
Chris?